Okay. Good evening. This is a regular meeting of the Princeton Zoning Board of Adjustment being held electronically via Zoom on February 26, 2025 at 7:30 PM. Pursuant to Section 13 of the open public meeting, adequate notice of the time and place of this meeting has been given by prominently posting the sunshine notice of the Princeton Zoning Board of Adjustment. Such notice has been placed on the official bulletin board at the municipal complex and by transmitting a copy of the notice to the Princeton Packet, Town Topics, The Times, Trentonian, and by filing a copy with the Clerk of Princeton on February 21st, 2025, and has been posted to the municipal website. Pursuant to the extension of the ongoing state of emergency by Executive Order 292 in accordance with the Emergency Remote Public Meetings Protocol, the local public bodies to conduct a public meeting without physical attendance by members of the public. Notice that during this extension of the state of emergency, all regular and special meetings of the Princeton Zoning Board of Adjustment will be held electronically via Zoom, was transmitted to the Princeton Packet, Town Topics, and The Times, and was filed with the Clerk of Princeton on the 24th day of April, 2020. Such notices have been placed on the official bulletin board at the municipal complex and on the Princeton website and are to be maintained throughout the year and by transmitting a copy of same to the Princeton Packet, Town Topics, The Times, Trentonian, Comcast Media, and by filing a copy thereof with the Clerk of Princeton. Notices have been placed on all windowed doors of the municipal complex. Okay, Claudia, can you pull the roll, please?
Ms. Chen?
Here.
Ms. Coulson?
Here.
Mr. Dobkin?
Here.
Mr. Floyd?
Here.
Mr. Schreiber?
Here.
Mr. Tenenbaum?
Here.
Mr. Stein? Ms. Donna?
Yes.
Chairman Cohen?
Yeah.
Thank you.
Okay, we have five minutes to approve. Copies of those of all are in your packets. I guess we'll take the first one here. We'll do these individually, Karen.
If you want to do them collectively, you just, I think, name each set of minutes and then just ask for each one, and then we collectively approve them all.
Okay. All right. Well, our first one, which is trying to see if I have a copy of it, actually. December. I'm looking for the, I'm looking for the copy of the August 28th minutes. I don't seem to have it. I will look online. Okay, so we have, the first one would be August 28th. Do, there should be a copy in your packets.
Are you going to take them all collectively, or you want us to?
Well, I'll go through each one, I'll go through each one and ask for comments. And if we get all done, then, as Karen said, we can vote on them. It's bringing up the 28th on my screen, okay? All right, are there any comments from any members about the minutes of August 28, 2024? Okay. The next one would be the minutes for the meeting on September 25th, 2024. Questions or comments? Okay. The next one is October 23rd, 2024. Same thing, question or comment? Okay. The next one is November 13th, 2024. And the last one is December 11th, 2024. Okay, if there are no comments, would someone like to make a motion for approval?
I'll move that we vote to approve.
Thank you. Second?
I'll second. Floyd?
Thank you. Okay, Claudia, can you pull the roll, please?
Karen, how would I do with the people that were absent? Like on the, on the first set of meetings, Cohen, Coulson, and Tenenbaum were out. On the second set, it was on Schreiber.
Well, I'm going to have to
We're going to have to do these
revise my advice now. We're going to have to go motion for each one, and Claudia will have to indicate who can vote and who can't for each set.
All right, let's go back, and so we'll take them individually. And the first one is August 28th.
And I can't move to approve that one.
Right, because you were out that
I believe I was out also.
Okay, yes, you were. So that was Bernice and Chris Dobkin? Who's second there?
I'll second.
Okay, so Ms. Chen?
Yes.
Mr. Floyd?
Yes.
Mr. Schreiber?
Yes.
Ms. Donna?
Yes.
Okay.
Okay.
September 25th. Ms. Chen with Sal and Mr. Schreiber.
Okay. Someone like to make a motion on that on September 25th? Minutes.
I'll move, I'll move approval, Floyd.
I'll second.
Coulson?
Yes.
Mr. Floyd?
Yes.
Mr. Tenenbaum?
Yes.
Ms. Donna?
Yes.
Chairman Cohen?
Yes.
Thank you. Okay, the 23rd, 10/23. Harlan, you were out that day.
So moved.
I'll second.
Okay, Ms. Chen?
Yes.
Ms. Coulson?
Yes.
Mr. Floyd?
Yes.
Mr. Schreiber?
Yes.
Ms. Donna?
Yes.
Chairman Cohen? Thank you. Next one for November 13th. Everybody was in attendance.
Okay. I'll move.
Who was that? I'm sorry.
Harlan.
Second. Schreiber.
Ms. Chen?
Yes.
Ms. Coulson?
Yes.
Mr. Floyd?
Yes.
Mr. Schreiber?
Yes.
Mr. Tenenbaum?
Yes.
Chairman Cohen?
Yes.
Ms. Donna?
Yes.
Thank you. December 11th, everybody was in attendance as well.
So moved.
Second.
Ms. Chen?
Yes.
Ms. Coulson?
Yes.
Mr. Floyd?
Yes.
Mr. Schreiber?
Yes.
Mr. Tenenbaum?
Yes.
Ms. Donna?
Yes.
Chairman Cohen?
Yes.
Thank you.
Okay. Before we review the resolutions, there in our packets was the zoning board of adjustment activity report for 2024 in draft form. Have, have you had an opportunity to look at it? Members?
Yes.
Are there any questions or comments?
Do we have to approve it?
Derek, do we approve this? We could, do we do it by this majority, or how do we do this?
Yeah, I think it can be done. Well, somebody has an objection to it.
Okay.
Just.
Okay. All right. Does somebody want to make a motion on this?
So moved.
I'll second.
All right, Claudia?
Ms. Chen?
Yes.
Ms. Coulson?
Yes.
Mr. Floyd?
Yes.
Mr. Schreiber?
Yes.
Mr. Tenenbaum?
Yes.
Ms. Donna?
Yes.
Chairman Cohen?
Yes.
Thank you.
All right, we have resolutions this evening that were in your packet. The first is case number Z24-535874 Kingston Road, Block 4703, Lot 35. Have you reviewed this? Are there any corrections or comments? If not, if someone like to make a motion?
I'll move approval of this resolution.
Thank you.
I'll second it, Coulson.
Thank you. Okay, Claudia?
One, one second. Ms. Chen?
Yes.
Ms. Coulson?
Yes.
Mr. Floyd?
Yes.
Mr. Schreiber?
Yes.
Mr. Tenenbaum?
Yes.
Chairman Cohen?
Yes.
Thank you.
Okay, our second resolution is case number Z24-57358 Cleveland Lane, Block 5.01, Lot 11. Once again, this resolution is in your packet. If you reviewed it, have questions or comments, or if not, a motion, please.
I'll move approval, Floyd.
Thank you. Okay, Claudia, please call the roll.
Who's second there?
Oh, I did.
Ms. Chen?
Yes.
Ms. Coulson?
Yes.
Mr. Floyd?
Yes.
Mr. Schreiber?
Yes.
Mr. Tenenbaum?
Yes.
Chairman Cohen?
Yes.
Thank you.
Okay, we have one application this evening. It is case Z24-574251 Edgerstone Road, Block 8204, Lot 7 in the R2T Zone. Karen, are all the notices in order?
Yes, the notices are in order, and the board has jurisdiction tonight, and I will swear Derek in for the evening. Derek, do you swear or affirm your testimony this evening will be truthful?
Yes, ma'am, I do.
Thank you.
Thank you.
Derek, can you summarize your memo, please?
Yes, sir. Thank you, Your Honor. The applicant is our Kevin and Devin Baranek, seeking C1 and C2 variances to permit the construction of a new home, an exception to the required lot width, frontage, and area. Subject property is located within the R2T Zone. Required lot area is 65,340 square feet. The existing is 39,708. And lot width, and lot frontage requirements are both 175 square feet, and both are 150 square feet. The applicant is proposing to demolish the existing home and construct a new, approximately 6,200 square foot home, featuring a full partially finished basement, three car motor, court garage, living room, dining room, family room, office, sunroom, six bedrooms, five floor baths, a powder room. The following variances are requested. Lot area requirement, 65340 square feet. The existing is 39708. And lot frontage and width, the requirement is 175, and they are both 150 feet. The applicant should advise if they have approached any adjoining land owners to either sell part of their land to reduce the lot width and frontage and area non-compliances. They've offered, they're seeking consideration under both the C1 and the C2 variances. If you have any questions, I'd be glad to address them.
Congress?
Thank you, sir.
Okay. Actually, Mr. Kennedy is here. I assume you're representing.
Thank you so much, members of the board. Ryan Kennedy from Stevenson Lee here on behalf of the homeowner applicants. As Mr. Bridger said, while we did request a C1 or C2, this is your classic C1 hardship variance for an existing undersized lot. If we were in the borough rather than the former township, we probably wouldn't be here tonight. Their proposal is to build an otherwise conforming home on their lot, and as when we take you through our presentation, you'll see there was not an option to get additional land from the properties on either side, both of which are also a non-conforming as to area, and to do so would make them even more non-conforming in the case of the one to the right that we'll look at. There's a shed in the way as well, unfortunately. We'll try to make this simple and quick for you this evening. Our one witness, we've got the homeowner's developer, Daniel Barsky. I'd like to have him sworn in. We can take you through our presentation.
Mr. Barsky, do you swear or affirm your testimony this evening will be truthful? We can't hear you for some reason. I don't know if you're muted. That's, yeah, can you speak up?
Because we couldn't hear you.
That last part we could hear. Okay. Dan, would you want to quickly introduce yourself in relation to the project and the homeowners? And if you'd like, I can share my screen if you'd like to share yours.
Yeah, I'll share my screen. Just give me one second.
If it's all right. When we do that, Ms. Casey, we have one exhibit this evening to mark as a one that we provided. We should be going through. We expect 11 slides.
Thank you.
I assume everybody sees my screen?
You got your data.
Good evening, board members. My name is Daniel Barsky, and I will be presenting the application for 251 Edgerstone Road on behalf of the applicants and the owners, Kevin and Devin Baranek. The Baraneks currently live actually in this neighborhood on 280 Edgerstone Road for the past seven years. They are a family of seven. Kevin and Devin and their five children, all who are under the age of nine. They've currently outgrown their current space on 280 Edgerstone Road. So in October of 2024, they purchased the lot on 251 Edgerstone to design and build a new home. They're very excited to stay in the neighborhood that they love, in a home that better suits their needs. Kevin and Devin hired me to help them through the engineering and architectural design, the permitting process, along with the zoning board variances, the submission, and hopefully tonight's approval. So I have a relatively short presentation. It's pretty simple, but I'll run it through and starting on Slide 2. Is the tax map. Again, the property is located on 251 Edgerstone Road, Block 8204, Lot 7 in the R2 Zone. On Slide 3 is a Google Earth image of 251 Edgerstone, which is highlighted in yellow. You can see the tennis courts from the Hun School at the bottom of your screen. And actually, to the rear of the property is Greenway Meadows Park. The Baraneks are seeking relief for the following bulk requirements, which are highlighted in yellow. Minimum lot area where 65,340 square feet are required. The existing is 39,708 square feet, as well as relief for lot width and lot frontage where 175 feet are required and 100 feet are existing. All the other bulk requirements are in compliance with the R2 Zone. On Slide 5, I've illustrated a snapshot of the neighborhood and the neighboring lots outlined in red, while 251 Edgerstone is outlined in yellow. So interestingly enough, out of the 34 lots in this snapshot of the neighborhood, not one of these lots meets the required zoning bulk requirements. Out of 34 of these lots, none meet the 1 1/2 acre lot area standard, and only nine out of 34 meet the lot width or lot frontage. But essentially, none of them are conforming to the zone, including Lot 7 on 251 Edgerstone. And on the following Slide 6, again, 251 Edgerstone is highlighted in yellow. Again, the Greenway Meadows Park is in the rear, and the two lots directly adjacent to 251 Edgerstone are also non-conforming. Lot 6 is non-conforming in respect to lot area, lot width, and lot frontage. And Lot 8 is non-conforming in lot area. So there is no opportunity to purchase a piece of the neighboring land to make 251 Edgerstone more conforming without making the neighboring lots more non-conforming. It's worth noting, too, that Lot 6 was in front of the zoning board in 2019 for the same exact variances which were granted, which was for lot area, lot width, and lot frontage. Part of the requirements for lot area and with variances in the township is to share the proposed house elevation and plans with the municipal zoning officer, Derek Bridger. Derek has reviewed the plans and found them to meet the requirements of the neighborhood character ordinances. On the next couple slides, I'd like to share the proposed house elevations with you. So I'll just go through them quickly. This is the proposed front elevation. Slide 8 shows the rear elevation with the deck from the first floor and a walkout basement. The topography on the lot allows for a walkout basement because of the dive down to the rear. Slide 9 is the right side elevation. And finally, Slide 10 is the left side elevation. And as Derek described, there's a motor court, three car garage. So actually, the garage, actually, garages aren't even visible from the street. The Baraneks are obviously excited to move this forward. And clearly, they want to stay in the neighborhood. That's why they purchased this land. So that concludes my presentation. I'm hoping to receive zoning board approval tonight so that the Baranek family will be able to stay in the neighborhood they love in a home suited to their needs for their family and their five children. I believe we have demonstrated both the positive and negative criteria for a C1 variance that have been satisfied. As a recap, not one of the lots in the neighborhood meets the R2 zoning bulk requirements, including 251 Edgerstone, and there's no way to relieve the existing non-conformities of lot area, frontage, or width by cooperating with adjacent neighbors. So thank you for your time and consideration, and I'm happy to take any questions if there are any.
Board members, any questions, Mr. Barsky?
Yeah, I have a question. I actually have a question of Mr. Barsky and I guess Mr. Bridger. I think Mr. Barsky said that the adjacent Lot 6 was also in for the same type of variance. And so I would ask them what, what was or wasn't granted to Lot 6? And then the second part of the question is Lot 8, I understand is also, from what you say, undersized with the presence zoning. Does that relieve Derek, the applicant, of having to ask them in Lot 8 for more property?
I mean, I, I think it does. I'll defer to Karen, but I mean, if they don't have the lot width or the the lot area to grant any relief to the applicant, it's really an exercise in futility, so.
Donna, that, that is the position the board has been consistently taking, that if the surrounding lots are already non-conforming, if they were to give land, it would just increase their non-conformity further, so that it's a question of who gets the variance. So that's why the board has taken the position, if that's the case, there isn't a need to make a formal request either to any of the surrounding property owners that are non-conforming.
Okay, and I just wanted to ask Mr. Barsky or Mr. Bridger, whoever knows, what was the, you know, the, the type of variances requested by Lot 6, and what was or wasn't granted?
Actually, it's funny, because when, when my wife and I first got married, there was a 100-year-old ranch house there that we moved into. So we actually lived next door for four or five years. After we moved out, I brought the application myself to get variances on that lot for with frontage and area, and we did receive the variances, and there is a new house built there, also a young family with children that live there now.
So that house was also taken down and a new house built?
Yeah, it was, when I was living there, it was a two-bedroom ranch house. So yeah, now there's a substantially bigger home with a new family there. But yeah, I was in front of the board. I believe it was 2018 or 2019 with the application.
Yep. That's 259?
Yeah, 259, right, Derek, yep.
Yep, you're correct.
Thanks.
Any other questions of the applicant, of Mr. Barsky? Or Mr. Kennedy? Yes, Eve?
Um, I know that there are a lot of mature trees on that property, and I wonder what plans you have to preserve and protect the trees as much as possible. I, I believe that some of the, in the front, it's going to be as you have it designed, it looks to me like the driveway kind of would go right through one or two of them, so. But I'm just curious to know what you have planned.
You know, to tell you the truth, we haven't gone far enough along with a site plan engineer in designing exactly where curb cuts would go and what trees would be impacted, but certainly we would meet the requirements of the municipality and all the tree ordinances and get any approvals from the municipal arborists and any kind of work that we would be doing.
So you haven't, you haven't gotten, I, I noticed that you didn't, that wasn't included in what you gave us, so I, that's why I asked. You haven't gotten to that yet.
No, no, we haven't gotten to it yet, but we do. We are sensitive to the impact of trees, and obviously, we're going to take that seriously. But moving forward, you know, the municipality has a lot of rules and regulations that revolve around the trees, plus the municipal arbor sign off, and clearly, we're going to comply with all of those.
Okay, thank you.
Board members, any other questions? Okay. Mr. Kennedy, we'll open it up to the public. Do you want to say anything before we do that?
Just to thank the board again tonight for your consideration. Again, this is feel your, your classic C1 for the narrowness of this particular lot and lack of remedy, unfortunately, other than to come to this board. And again, I'll note, I know you did your annual report here tonight, but I, the rules in the borough, former borough are a little different here, and the township lots do, in this scenario, have to come here, where borough ones do not. I, I do like having a job and helping people with these variances, but also I'd be perfectly happy not to have them have to hire an attorney to, to come here as well. So I'll just note that. Thank you.
Okay. We're going to open the meeting up to the public. Claudia, has anyone indicated they'd like to speak on this application?
There are no hands.
Okay, give it a minute here. All right, we have no public comment. I'll close the meeting to the public. Once again, Mr. Kennedy, before we go into executive session, do you have anything you'd like to add?
Nothing else, Mr. Chairman. Thank you so much for everyone's time tonight.
You're welcome. Okay, board members, questions? Discussion on this? Or would someone like to make a motion?
I'll move to approve it. It seems straightforward. I'll move to approve it. It seems straightforward.
Pretty much nothing we can do about it. Not that we would, but I agree with you. Okay, someone like to second this motion?
I'll second it, Floyd.
Any questions on the motion? Okay, Claudia, can you call the roll, please?
Ms. Chen?
Yes.
Ms. Coulson? Eve?
You're muted.
Yep, you're right, yes. Sorry.
Floyd?
Yes.
Mr. Schreiber?
Yes.
Ms. Donna?
Yes.
Mr. Tenenbaum?
Yes.
German Cohen?
Yes.
Thank you, it's approved.
Okay, thank you, thank you.
Come on, board members.
Kennedy, good luck, Ms. Baranek. If there is nothing else this evening, we are adjourned. Mr. Dopkin, it's good to meet you, and we'll see you again next month.
And don't get used to the meetings being in this brief. Meeting we've had in, what, over a decade?
The shortest meeting we've ever had.
Yeah, I think so, Steve.
Yeah, pretty much.
He's, Mr. Dopkin's good luck to us.
I was a little shocked to see that the meeting was three hours. And now I can tell my family that they're, you know, they're always twenty minutes.
Thank you, everybody. Thank you again.
Good night. Thanks, everyone.
Hey, Derek?
Yes, sir.
Ever, are we, are we done? Can we, can I ask your question?
Claudia, are we off the?
No, I gotta close it. You can call the office. I'll pick up the call.
Yeah, never mind. I, I just curiosity. I'll, I'll talk to you later. Good night.
Good night. Good night.